Two, one. Good evening, Kenbee. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. This is the Planning Commission hearing for January 22, 2024. We'd like to open our meeting call to order with a pledge of allegiance. If you'd all stand, gentlemen, remove your hats. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're down a couple of commissioners tonight, but we've got a majority, so we're going to move ahead. We've got one that we're, he might be stuck in traffic. We're not really sure. First, first item of business is consent items. My name's Dan Ewer, by the way. I'm taking Matt Ellison. Matt's out of town. He's our chair and vice chair, so I'm taking his place tonight. Our consent items, first one is draft minutes, meeting minutes for July 10, 2023. Commissioners had a chance to go over those items. Any changes? Discussion on those? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Cherry, were, were you going to mention about the, so those are the minutes, not the findings? Okay.
We're doing the draft minutes.
Minutes, okay. Yes.
Any discussion on the minutes? Will need a motion? From someone?
I move to approve the minutes as written from July 10, 2023.
Thank you, Judy.
Welcome.
We have a motion, second?
A second.
Seconded by.
Just well.
Yes, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, passes four zero. Okay, the final findings for DR 2303, CUP 23-01, Clackamas County Fairgrounds Multipurpose Building. It's what we heard last meeting. We have those findings before us. Anybody have any, any changes or discussion on that? I have one on, on the. Get it here. On the conditions of approval, I chatted a little bit with staff about the wording on this. And I think we talked a little bit about it in the meeting, but I would be, I would like to know if the commission would entertain changing the wording to this a little bit. On item number two, it says, "One year after the multipurpose building is fully operational, the applicant shall provide a monitoring report that documents parking needs generated by events held partially or entirely within the multipurpose building. If the report identifies parking to be in excess of what is identified in the applicant's parking report during full occupancy of the new building, a land use modification process may be required and a parking management plan may be required." The wording on that is a little bit interesting to me, the excess and so on. And I think it would also be an opportunity for us, for staff to bring it back to us and just give us, on their report, on that report, give us some information on that report. And Dawn, I chatted a little bit about this, and Dawn's got some wording that he thinks we could maybe make this a little cleaner.
So adding on to the commentary, I think the clarifier here that Cherry was seeking is, and this is what I've drafted for, for this, is, "Planning staff will review the documentation provided by the applicant and will inform the Planning Commission whether a modification process and parking management plan is required." And the review then of that would be by planning staff, which is consistent with the condition of approval. But we would provide the direction on that to Planning Commission before the modification process, if it was so deemed necessary. And the parking management plan, if that was deemed necessary, we would provide that to Planning Commission before that started. And the purpose of that would be to identify, on planning staff's side of things, we have different levels of review. We could do a type one, type two, or type three modification process for that. And Planning Commission could weigh in on that process that we would determine, would it be significant enough that the neighborhood would want to do another hearing on that, which should be probably the worst case scenario? Or would it be a type two, which the neighbors would receive notice on that? That could be appealed? Or is it insignificant and essentially something that would not need notice? Or if, in that case, it probably would be that there would not be an excess situation where there'd have more demand than supply of parking and inconsistent with the parking study. So I think it's just a matter of bringing that back. So again, I'll catch up, Chair Llewellyn, on this. So condition two on the findings for the Clark County, I'm sorry, for the Clackamas County Fairgrounds, the condition would remain as it is written, but just with the clarifier added, that planning staff will review the, review the documentation provided by the applicant and will inform the Planning Commission whether a modification process and parking management plan is required. So that would be the add.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Any discussion on that? Change, add the wording?
Sounds good.
All right, good enough. If so, we'll hear a motion on that.
I move to approve the amended minutes, or decision, rather.
Findings.
Findings.
Right. Okay, it's been moved.
A second.
And seconded to approve DR 23-03 slash CUP 2301 with the changes to condition number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we are going to move on. Okay, we are going to go to citizen input on non-agenda items. We have anybody in the audience tonight that would like to bring somebody, something to the commission that is not presently on the agenda? Got lots of smiling faces out here tonight. I'm assuming that you are probably all here for the hearing. Okay, seeing no input from any citizens on non-agenda items, we will go to new business. Seeing none, we are going to go to the public hearing. And for the public hearing tonight, we are going to be hearing that, and I don't know how to pronounce this right, I'm probably going to mess it up, Tivoli? Tivoli?
Turn.
Is that close enough? We all know what we're talking about. Commons, which is DR 23-06 and PLA 2305. I get to read the format to you tonight. Tonight, there is a matter before this hearing body that requires a public hearing. All questions must be directed through the chair. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable, excuse me, applicable review criteria contained in the staff report and the comprehensive plan or other land use regulations with the, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties the opportunity to respond to the issues may preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Conflict of interest. At this time, I would ask that if any member of the hearing body has, who has had a conflict of interest, please indicate the nature and the extent of the conflict and whether or not you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing of the present matter. Conflict?
No.
No conflict.
Judy?
No, sir.
Okay, very good, no conflict. Any questions from the public? Seeing none. We will talk about ex parte contact. Also, if any member of the hearing body has had any ex parte contact with anyone prior to this hearing, including a visit to the site, please declare the nature and the extent of such contact at this time.
I visited the site. I went around the neighborhood and I went around every which way I could.
Very good.
I did the same.
Judy?
Nothing for me.
Okay, I visited the sites, drew no conclusions. Any questions for the hearing body? Seeing none, the public hearing will, the public hearing will be conducted as follows. Staff has five minutes to present. We will have questions from the hearing body to the staff. The chair will open the public hearing for testimony. The applicant will have 20 minutes. The proponent, three minutes. Opponents, three minutes. Rebuttal, 10 minutes by the applicant. Now, I just also want to say, there's quite a few of you here tonight. And this isn't, but I just want to make sure you each have three minutes to speak. If you're here, you don't want to speak, but you have someone that's speaking for you, you can allocate their three minutes to them. They can speak then for six minutes or nine minutes or however many, but they have to say who they're speaking for. Okay? Got that? Any questions on that? Make sure that's clear. Okay, so then the applicant has 10 minutes for rebuttal. The chair will then close the public hearing, and then we'll have questions by the hearing body, and we will have discussion. A decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of this hearing, or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions of the hearing body of the process tonight? Sir? Yes, sir. Well, barring we don't come up with something else and it gets, it gets moved forward to a date specific, as we said. Okay? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the staff report. Brianna?
Wonderful, thank you. Good evening, commissioners and public. It's nice to see everybody here. Hopefully, we all made it through last week's ice storm all right, intact. So yes, tonight, we are here to review the Tivoli Commons, which is DR 23-06 and PLA 23-05. That's design review and property line adjustment. Here are the existing conditions of the site. It's currently three parcels, and that's what the property line adjustment is for, to consolidate those three parcels. There are four existing houses on the site and one outbuilding. You can see it's in a regular shape. Each of the three parcels is in a regular shape, and then you put them together, and it's really unique. And you can see that there is limited frontage on both South Knot Street and Southeast Township Road. Pretty limited frontage, but they do have those two streets. And I also wanted to mention that the site altogether is just about two acres. Here is the zoning map for the property. It's zoned R2, which is high-density residential. It's surrounded by a high-density residential. South of Township, it's R1.5, which is medium-density residential. And you can kind of see Locust Park is north of there. And so just to orient everyone, this is not and Township. Here is the proposal. So the proposal is to consolidate the three tax lots into one tax lot and develop a 30-unit condominium development. There'd be a total of eight buildings, seven four-unit townhouse-style buildings and one sort of duplex townhouse-style building. It's a mixture of two and three bedroom units, and each one will have a small private yard. There are two existing accesses that I discussed, and those points will be maintained and improved to provide circulation throughout the development. And there are two parking stalls for each unit, one garage and one driveway space, and 11 guest parking spaces in addition to that. Here are the sections of the development code that apply to the project. We discussed them rather thoroughly in our staff report that was provided to the commission posted online. I'm not going to go through all of them. I have five minutes, but I am just going to point out a few kind of key factors and designs of the project. First, here are the R2 standards in this first chart here. So density setbacks, building height and width, impervious surface, landscape buffer and infill standards. You can see they do meet all of these standards here, just summarily. I know I did mention that R1.5 was south of Township, but because there's a street there, the landscape buffer and infill standards don't apply. The landscape buffer, actually, they do, they would meet that anyway. But just wanted to clarify that those don't apply there. Parking standards, again, really quickly. Our standard is two spaces per two-bedroom or more. So two-bedroom or three-bedroom both require two parking stalls. So we have 60 stalls for the 30 units, and per our code, we would require a total of six guest parking stalls, and they are providing 11. So that also meets the code. All of the parking spaces are standard dimensions. There is no compact spaces proposed. The residential design standard, multifamily design menu, kind of a mouthful. Again, I've just summarized it here. Each one of these categories has specific kind of design elements where you earn points. Some may not be applicable, such as the block framework, that really only applies to a development that would cover an entire block. But so overall, you can see here, they meet the minimum total required of 60% applicable points overall, and they are exceeding the total amount of LID points. There's 10% required, and they're providing 44% there. There is one section in that design matrix that earned zero points, and that is because of the unique orientation of the lot and the way that the development has been designed. So the design has the buildings facing each other and the internal accessway. If we were to kind of see the letter of this design standard, this first one, primary entrances facing the street, because of that very limited frontage, they actually would be facing folks' backyards, right? Front door, backyard. That's not really what we want in practice here. So it's a, it's a unique situation. And so that first primary entrances facing the street not really feasible with the dimensions and configuration of the lot. And then similarly, with that unique shape, the accessways, we, in this design standard, would like to see buildings within the first 25 feet of the front property line. But again, those property lines are taken up completely by the accessway. And so, you know, you can't put a building in a, in a driveway. So essentially, that is kind of, kind of not able to be met. And there are other design elements that the applicant has proposed, and I'm going to let them kind of dig into the details on those. Driveways and access spacing. So on South Knot Street, it's a local street classification. They're proposing a 26-foot-wide driveway. And this is, because it's a local street, the spacing standards are 10 feet from other driveways and 50 feet from an intersection, and they are meeting that. And they are also dedicating five feet right-of-way and are going to upgrade the sidewalk there, public improvements. On Southeast Township, it's a little bit different. That's a collector street classification. It's a higher street classification there. They're proposing, so it's a 20-foot driveway with a six-foot sort of pedestrian access with a roll curb. We've seen this before, but, so for emergency access, they have the 26-foot total width. But for just occupant vehicles, they'll have the 20-foot width driveway, which does meet our standards. But again, that six-foot extra meets the emergency access standards. So the spacing for this access does not meet our minimum spacing standards, which are 100 feet from both driveways and intersections. And that's really because there are existing driveways on either side. They aren't missing it by very much. But again, I'm going to let the applicant go into the, the details on that one. Our transportation impact analysis did show that no operational or safety issues are anticipated from that small deviation. Again, they will give our, they will give the details on that, but staff recognize that and see that there is no operational or safety issues. And also, public improvements and a curb realignment. There was a tree, there's no longer a tree, so they're going to straighten out the curb. They did not take out the tree. But that was kind of a pre-existing condition that they're going to fix up. More info on the transportation impact analysis. A total of 216 average daily trips will be created from the 30-unit development. Intersection operations will remain within the acceptable range of conditions compared to ODOT and city mobility standards. Access spacing, again, the exception for Southeast Township has been discussed. Site distance is adequate on both accesses, but will be verified again at the site plan stage. Frontage improvements are required, and no off-site improvements are required. So no additional light fixtures or anything like that. So overall, the TIA did decide the proposed site adequately addresses each transportation approval criteria and the livability measures with the recommended, recommended transportation conditions of approval that are included in the staff report. Finally, our agency and public comments. We received comments and conditions of approval from these agencies. Direct link, Kenbee Utility Board, Kenbee Public Works, Karen MacLeod, who is our consulting engineer, and Kenbee Fire Department. And it was determined that services and utilities are available or will become available through the conditions of approval provided by these agencies and included in the staff report. Lastly, we're going to address two public comments that we received. The first one is from a neighbor, Amanda Bolts. These are included in their entirety in the staff report along with a more robust staff response, but I do want to also address them here. Amanda states that there is an abundance of high-density housing in the area and that there are concerns about noise, respect, property value, parking, and traffic, and request single-family homes in the area instead. As we showed earlier, the property is zoned R2 and is surrounded by R2 and is also designated high-density residential in our comp plan, which supports the zoning. So those are in line sort of with our long-term and our shorter-term development code for high-density housing. There's a shortage of this type of housing throughout the city and throughout the region, which we've been learning sort of pretty intimately as we update our housing needs analysis and policies here. And actually, you know, these separate lot, single-family homes, it would be really, really difficult for them to be placed in the R2 zone, given the dimensional standards of that zone. And we do want to point out, again, kind of the ownership component of this being a condominium where there will be individual owners of the units. You know, we just see that encourage, you know, fostering the neighborhood respect that some people may be concerned about. Secondly, we got another concern from a neighbor, Monica Olivera. Her primary concern was solar access and requests restriction to single-story structures and suggests that our development code kind of be waived for this particular situation. And I do, I very much sympathize, sympathize with that. But we, we cannot sort of reactionary or project-by-project basis add these extra restrictions on to developments. So we actually had solar access requirements in our code from 1991 to 2013. And they were actually removed by our mayor and council in 2013 because they proved to be, and this is from the, the staff report at that time, antiquated, difficult to enforce, and encouraged inefficient use of land, which I think is kind of the most egregious of the three. As well, Oregon State law prevents additional standards being placed on development. And we just wanted to point out that the proposed buildings are almost 10 feet shorter than the maximum allowed. They're under 27 feet tall, which, you know, you could see a two-story home with a pitched roof meet that same height. So we don't think that the total height proposed is egregious, especially compared to the standards of the zone. So finally, based on that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission approve applications DR 23-06 and PLA 23-05, subject to the conditions of approval provided in the staff report. I'll happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to commissioners. Any questions for staff on their report? Now would be the time to get those out there.
I do have a question.
Mic on?
Yeah, I'll get it closer.
There we go.
I've got a question for you. Chapter 16.76.010A states that a minimum of 15% of the site shall be devoted to open space and shall be located in a common area. All of the opens, the vast majority of the open space in this plan is just little pieces of front yard and little green edges that are going to be covered with shrubbery and not really open for use. There's going to be a little recreational area where you first come in off of Township. It's about 2,500 square feet and maybe 1,500 square feet of two picnic tables that are going to be in the lovely garden area behind the dumpster. So I don't see how that's really speaking to open space and common area use for these 30 new homeowners. Could you please elaborate on why we were recommending to approve that?
I don't know if we have regulations against landscaping being in open space. Dawn?
I, I, I would agree with Brianna. I would like the applicant to address that as well in their presentation. I'm not sure how we've done other projects that are similar to this. But I think it's probably a definitional issue on our code is my sense that, you know. So the language, Brianna, you want to bring that up?
I'm using the computer that is projecting to the screen.
I wrote it downward for.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Can you repeat that?
So a minimum of 15% of the site shall be devoted to open space and shall be located in a common area. So if these townhomes are going to be sold, these tiny little patches of grass between driveways is not common area. Same thing for little strips of grass in front of parking. So that really does just leave the space on the left. If you're looking at the layout that we've got of the landscaping here, on the Knot Street entrance side, about halfway up on the left-hand side, you'll see a rectangle with two little squares in it. That's two picnic tables with a little bit of grass around it behind the dumpsters. And then on the far right-hand side, which is where Township Road opens up, there's a little area with a little circle dais kind of there. That's paving with some grass around it. And altogether, that's about 4,000 square feet of the 13,000 square feet that would be required if 15% were being used for common area.
Okay. So I see that we did classify that as common area as well. So we, as staff, staff accepted that as common area. And I feel like that's a function of probably, again, our definitions. But you bring up a very good point. Common space excluding accessways totals 21% of the site. So hopefully, since we have a figure here, the applicant team on C4, was that the landscaping plan that we?
So the landscaping plan is a good example of how all of the common areas that were identified are going to actually be landscaping area.
I just see a separate sheet here that references calculations. So again, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I'm wondering if that sheet actually shows us. So I'm hoping the applicant has it.
I, the number that they came up was, was about 18,000 square feet, and that's if you count everybody's front yard and all the little areas that you see that have plants.
Okay.
So all of that together, they were saying is 18, which is 21% of the whole. But 15% is 13,000 square feet. And we only really have maybe about 4,000 square feet of functional space. Yeah. So for me, that's a big concern because we gave them two points in the, in the matrix to get them to their minimum 60%. And for me, 15% must be devoted to open space and be located in common.
I see the phrase in there, yeah.
For me. So that's my number one big concern.
Understood.
And it might just be a. And it might just be a longer-term thing, but with 1,300 square-foot houses, these are very likely to be filled up with families with kids. So counting a garage as a parking space, when you have such a small space, very limited storage indoors, it seems unrealistic to expect that most of those families are going to be able to devote their garage for parking, which means we're asking 30 houses worth of potential families to have one parking space and no street parking available around. And that's a concern as well.
When the applicant speaks, we'll get some breakdown. I think the question you're asking is of the 21% total, is there 15% in common open space? Is that the question?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
No, thank you.
I'd like to hear from the applicant too on the neighbors surrounding it. You know, we had this issue before. You know, we're going up two stories and we're looking down on the neighbors. I'm looking at this. It just seems like kind of a monstrosity we're putting in the middle of this thing to me, but I'd like to have them comment on that.
Okay. Well, it is two stories with a pitched roof. So they, I, it's my consideration that they did take into account sort of that design. It's not that ultra-modern flat roof with, you know, windows up the sides. Not to pick on any one design, but sort of compatibility with the pitched roofs in the neighborhood. I know that they did consider that, but I will let them speak to that as well.
May I please add one more thing? I was curious, when we look at the traffic study, it didn't actually look at the intersection of Knott and Township. It only looks at the large intersections of Township and Ivy, and Ivy and 99. But Knott at Township has terrible visibility. There's a bike lane that goes across, and then both of the houses on either side of Knott at Township have fences all the way up to the sidewalk. So you can't see anything left or right. And we can safely assume that there will be a number of people who will choose to leave to South Knott and down to Township with no visibility. But the traffic study didn't address that at all. And I'd love to understand a little bit more about why that was admitted, because I think it's pretty relevant to this.
Judy, have you got anything for us tonight?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing for staff, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of things. In the staff report, it's mentioned several times about the site distance at proposed accesses and that we won't be able to determine that until... Why, why is that? I mean, why do you say that? I counted at least three times. We know where the driveways are going to go. Is there a question?
It's an engineering concept that I'm not comfortable explaining, but it is kind of worked out through its public works and the applicant and DKS. So there's, it's an engineering concept that I think we could apply it now, but because changes are possible, we wouldn't want to take that time, consultant money, energy to determine that now if it may change in the pre-construction process. So we just want to make sure that it is checked before any actual groundwork is done, so it would be done.
Okay, well, I guess my, here's my, my question with that is, is that we're, we're splitting this hair down to where we're, we're allowing it to be just three feet out of compliance as far as our code is concerned. If, if we shove it all the way out, is it going to end up being six feet? Is it going to end up being 12 feet? You know, what, that just if we're, if we're going to approve it and we're going to allow three feet at the maximum, is that what you're asking us to do? Or is it, is that going to change? It, it just seems like we're, we have a moving target here that I, I don't quite understand why we don't know where those driveways are going to be. Okay, that's one. The other thing is, is that on page eight of the staff report, it talks about adequate frontage improvements. It says the applicant must construct a six-foot sidewalk along the frontage. Now, that's on Knott Street, is that correct?
I believe it's on both.
On both?
Yeah.
I didn't see it in the conditions of approval. Did I miss it or?
I will double-check right now. That's a great question. I'm not seeing the street names called out here. I'm seeing public improvements, but I'm not seeing both streets called out. So I'd be happy to draft something up.
Okay, I just, I want to make sure that those.
I agree.
Sidewalks get put in.
Yeah, I agree.
And the other question I got, how many wells are on this property?
Wells?
Wells, says that the wells would be abandoned?
I'm not sure. I'll let the applicant ask.
Okay. Okay, Judy, anybody else got anything for staff right now? Okay, we are going to move on to the applicant. Your turn.
So good evening, I'm Jason Bristol. I'm the, one of the owners and also the developer of the project. Kind of a little bit of history. This one acre of the property I purchased with my wife in about 18 years ago. And then another piece of property, the portion that's on Township Road, was purchased in 2014 by my mom. So that's how we came about getting this chunk of land. Really excited about the development. It's something that I've been thinking about working on over the years and putting pieces together, and it's kind of the right time now, so here I am. Just a quick thing on T of Oli, it's, I love it backwards, so it's a made-up word.
Good evening, I'm Pat Cecil with Cecil Engineering, 375 Portland Avenue, Gladstone. So I'm going to step through a few issues, questions, comments that you've had and hopefully answer those. I'll begin our presentation with our PowerPoint. So this is the site plan, and as Brianna noted in the staff report, it's irregularly shaped. It's got a little bit of frontage, about 50 feet of frontage on Knott Street and 90 feet of frontage on Township Road. The buildings include mostly four-story, or sorry, four-unit and some duplex buildings. Units are buildings one, two, six, seven, and eight will be three-bedroom units. And then buildings three through five will be two-bedroom units. The, uh, there are three significant-sized common areas on site. One is, area one is the area by Township Road at the entrance to the site. That'll be mostly landscaped. It's got a kind of a circular sidewalk feature there that'll have a bench in it. By the entrance off of Knott Street is kind of a linear, open-space area where people could play catch, make cornhole, maybe just lay out in the sun in that area. And then in between the buildings one and two is an area where there'll be a couple picnic tables. And the thought there is it might be a place where residents can gather, maybe have a, share a cup of coffee in the morning or something like that. Or if you have a birthday party and there's a few people that come over, then that's a spot to gather on site. As, as far as the 1676 question related to the open space and common area, on our sheet 34, sorry, C4 of our submittal, we note the areas that we considered to be common space. And those are, those include landscaping areas. Doesn't include the little area between the driveways, but it includes landscaped areas leading up the front doors, the common areas. Doesn't include any of the rear yard areas that are fenced. So it's basically area between buildings that's going to be owned in common and can be used in common by the residents.
Oh, sorry.
So just for the purposes of our calculation, and that's how we interpreted the code. As far as the traffic study at Township Road, what is studied, we have no input on that. We, the applicant pays the, the city to have a traffic memo prepared by DKS, and then DKS sets the scope of work. And either the applicant pays DKS to do that work or hires their own traffic engineer. In this case, Mr. Bristol hired DKS to perform the traffic study. So I know we've had questions about those in the past. Why weren't, wasn't this intersection, this intersection studied? And unfortunately, we just don't have any input into that. Next slide, please. So this is just some highlights from the, the traffic study. It does mention that the sites are, each approval criteria and livability measure transportation-related is addressed with the conditions of approval. To speak, Commissioner Ewer, regarding the site distance at the access points, I've always taken it to mean, I mean, they say in their letter that the traffic, the site distance, preliminary site distance appears adequate. I take it to mean to do it after construction in case something comes up during construction, like a mailbox, a shared mailbox unit, or a utility riser of some type that might block site access that isn't there today. And that's why it's done at the end of construction. That's, that's always been my interpretation as to why there's a condition of approval related to. It's a, basically a confirmation of site access at term, at the end of construction. As far as the other transportation memo issues, it, it does speak to that internal site circulation and connections to the city streets meet the requirements. And so the, the one issue that's in the traffic study that I want to address a little further is the spacing standard on Township Road. And we can, we included a, a healthy discussion in our submittal in the narrative. And in particular, on page 34, we have a diagram that shows the access points on Township Road. And the, the driveway into this site aligns with the driveway to the Canby Evangelical Church across the street. And moving it left or right, so it didn't align with that, would make it worse because you want to have major intersections, major driveways aligned with each other. Doing that on, on the north side of Township Road, to the east, it's 102.9 feet to the center of the next driveway. So that one's in compliance. To the west, it's 95.7 feet, so it's 4.3 feet shy of compliance. Now, we, we could have moved it a little bit, so they both would have been about 98, 99 feet. But then it's not aligned with the driveway across the street. So anyway, that driveway to the west that we're 95.7 feet away from, that's a single-family home. So just, I want to note that it's serving one residence. And then across the street, east of the Canby Evangelical Church, there's a driveway 90 feet away. And so when you're doing spacing standards, usually you look at both sides of the street. So that one's 10 feet out of compliance on the opposite side of the street. But those of you that have been on planning commission for a long time know that driveway spacing on Township Road is an, is an issue with every application that comes before you because there are a number of driveways along that street. Go to the next slide, please. Now regarding the building orientation to the street, Brianna addressed it in the staff report, but table 1621-070, that multifamily design menu, has eight categories, of which you're supposed to get a point out of each category. We were not able to get a point out of the building orientation category, and it's, it basically has to do with the geometry of the site and having very little site frontage. Next slide, please. So there's, there's basically two categories where, where you can get points. One is having your primary entrances face the street. And you can get a point for having entrance breezeways face the street. But we don't have entrance breezeways, so that's really not an option. Or you can get two points for having all entrances face the street. Well, it's tough to do 30-unit multifamily development with so little site frontage and have all the units face the street. So really, that top row isn't an option for this particular application. Next slide, please. So as far as the bottom line, having the site frontage with buildings within 25 feet of the front lot line, you basically get no points if you have buildings along 25% or less of the frontage. And this particular site, again, it's got about 160 feet of frontage, 163.1. To get to getting one point out of this lower line here, we'd have to get up to 42.4 feet of building along the frontage. Our units are 20 feet wide. So we'd actually have to come up with a different building type to get to 42 feet. But on this site, there's a, the, the limited frontage just makes it very difficult to try to get any buildings placed along the street frontage. And I'll show that on my next two slides here. This is the Knott Street frontage. So by the time we have a five-foot wide landscape strip along the south side of the driveway and then a 26-foot accessway, this is, shows the 26-foot accessway that the fire department wants at the street, kind of narrowing to 24 feet. The red lines that are dashed, those are setbacks. So there's a 15-foot setback along Knott Street, and then on the, the left side of the lot, there's a, there's a 20-foot two-story setback and then a 15-foot single-story setback. So you could, might be able to squeeze in a, like an 18-foot single-story home in that area, or you could do a 13-foot two-story home. A 13-foot two-story home isn't consistent with any other home in the neighborhood, and it's not consistent with what the applicant wants to build here. And so that's just not a desirable plan, and that's not proposed by the applicant. So Township frontage, please, next slide. So this is the Township Road. We could potentially have turned two buildings facing, or two units in one building facing Township Road. It would squeeze in between the setbacks and the driveway. To do that and provide garages, would have to have rear entry units, which would require driveway and parking area on the backside of the unit. As you've seen our plan, the, the rear yards on the current plan have fences and areas to create some private space for each resident. With a rear entry garage, that's really not possible. So on this, if this were done, the. So on this, if this were done, the private space for the residents of these two units would either have to be on the side of the building or maybe in the front yard along Township. So then you'd end up, instead of having a landscaped area out along Township, you'd have a fence, which we didn't really think was desirable. Next slide, please. And this, taking a look at the bigger plan, you can see if we, if we tried to fit the same number of units on the site, the driveway for these two units would actually conflict with the two units or the one of the units to the north. So we'd actually have to eliminate one unit from the site in order to turn the build, you know, and get units facing Township. Next slide. So we just kind of felt that this plan was the better layout for the site. And again, we're trying to balance utility access, pedestrian access, vehicular access, garbage access, you know, landscaping, impervious area percentage, all those things. We, you know, we're trying to take all those into account and come up with the best plan possible. And this is what we've come up with. And Mr. Bristol wants to finish out.
Yeah, so, so some of the things that kind of came to mind with this plan is, why did we choose condos versus apartments? Since we are talking high-density zoning, this could have been a large apartment complex, three stories tall, more than thirty, obviously, probably pushing sixty or fifty is, is more likely what it would have been. What I, what I did was I, I looked at the neighborhood and I thought, okay, what's going to be the least impactful for the neighbors? And in this case, these are single-family homes. They will be sold. They're two stories, twenty-six feet, something inches tall. It's, it's a condo association, so all the buildings will be maintained by the HOA, including the front, rear yards, common areas, everything. So it's going to be a really nice, high-quality project, which for an infill project like this one, I, I really was striving for something that was appealing to the neighbors and to the people that would be living at the project. And really, when, the way we came up with the plan, we got input, obviously, from the planning department, worked with them, service providers, fire department. We've got access, good access, flow-through, and all, all that ties together. Next, please. So the landscape plan includes shielding plants and trees around the exterior of the property. There are certain areas where we've, we've really strived to have evergreens to kind of block the views of cars, of road, of structures, everything. I shared this at the neighborhood meeting. A lot of people took pictures of it. I asked them, I said, if you see something that you want changed, please let me know. And, you know, we can move bushes around, we can add something, whatever, whatever. So I didn't hear back from anyone, so I think they were happy with the trees and everything that they saw. Additionally, we do have the inviting area at Township Road, which does have the bench, kind of a nice, open area there. Coming into the project, at the other side, we do have the parking and that's where the old fir tree is at the knot street entrance there. Next slide. This is just more of a close-up, kind of showing, it's not the easiest type of a drawing to read, but does show you that there's a lot of landscaping and the code actually requires coverage of the ground. And you kind of wonder, it's like, wow, it looks like a lot of shrubs. It, it's required, so hence the plan. Next, please. So this is the typical downstairs floor plan. It's got an open great room design. Every unit has a half bath downstairs, back patio, fenced backyards, and all of it will be maintained on the exterior by the HOA. Next slide. This is the typical three-bedroom design. It's two baths upstairs, laundry's upstairs, does have, obviously, the bedrooms are upstairs, the windows out the back will be facing a lot of the neighbors. And kind of my thought on, somebody had a thought on the bedroom windows looking down. The, my idea on bedroom windows looking down is, these are going to be used at night, most likely, so people are sleeping. It's not like it's the living area, for example. If you had everybody upstairs looking down, middle of the day, daylight, it's a little different. So try to minimize the impact on the neighbors with that way. We do also have two-bedroom suites, so instead of three-bedroom, two-bath, it's a two-bedroom, two-bath, but there's like two master suites. I've built some other townhomes. A lot of times you, so my, my experience has been that you either get first-time buyers and a lot of times they're single, moving in. There are some families, but they're usually first-time homebuyers as well. The other customer is going to be either a retired person or somebody that's close to retirement. And that's, that's been my experience with the last three or four projects, five projects that I've done here in Canby. So you get a variety, but that's kind of what I've seen. Lastly, some design features to make some visual interest. We've got both lap siding and horizontal siding. We're going to have that on all four sides of the building, including window wraps as Wrap up? All right. For visual interest, we also have bump outs across the front and when you have the hip roofs. So it's not just your standard rafter roof type, I think, what's that one called? Back of a building, typical, this is a two-bedroom unit. The one-bedroom or the, I'm sorry, these are the three bedrooms. For the two-bedroom, you only have one window looking out the back of the building. Next, please. And then these are the typical side views. The side views have only the small three windows that are above the staircase, looking out the sides. And this, I was going to say, that last picture also shows you the, the front doors on the end units with the forty-five degree angle. So if you were, say, on Township, you actually would see the front door in that visual there. Okay. Thank you.
And just to answer one question I forgot to answer earlier regarding wells on site, I think that's just a boilerplate condition of approval. The site actually has a number of water meters around the site. It's served by city water currently.
It's more of a curious thing than anything else. Okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to go to questions for the applicant. So we're going to start, Mr. Hutchinson, do you have anything?
Nothing at this point, thank you.
Judy?
I had one quick question, so thank you for that. Appreciation, that was very helpful. There was, in the pre-app document, something about a tree that there was a hope to have a tree removed on a neighbor's property, and that was dated from back in October. So what's the status of that?
That tree is the tree that was located on Township Road. It's, it was on the neighbor's property and it would have blocked the site.
Yeah, what's the status of it?
It's gone.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer?
None at this time.
Nothing right now.
Okay. I don't have anything now, gentlemen, thank you. Okay, we are going to move to, let's see, who could go first? We're going to go to the proponents. If you're here tonight to speak in favor of the project, now would be the time to come up to the mic. In favor? Anybody? Going, going, going? Okay, we're going to go to opponents. Now, being so nobody here, everybody else in the room, I'm assuming, either fits in the opponent's side or the either-way side. If you want to come up and speak to, if you don't have a problem with it, but you just want to come up and say something, so you're on the record, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, make sure you state that. When you come up to the microphone, I need you to state your name and your address, okay, for the record. Needs to be where you live, your name, where you live. And so we are going to open it up to opponents. If you have, if you're speaking for someone else, you need to tell me the name of the person you're speaking for, if you wish additional time. So we're going to open it up for opponents. Opponents? I got a room full of people. Okay. Golly, you guys must have just showed up because you heard I was chairing tonight. All right. Anybody else?
I'm sorry, there are no public comments.
It looks like we might have some people considering. You don't have to be shy.
Sure, we're, we don't, we've all had our shots, so, you know, we're, we're good. I need your name, address.
My name's Cameron Lawrence. I live at three-seven-seven South Locust Street. And my concern is, is the traffic study. Well, I heard that there wasn't one really done, but when the gas station got built by Fred Myers, you guys said it wasn't going to improve the flow of traffic by, by my house or whatever, by the neighborhood. Well, it improved the flow. And then you guys got on Knot Street, at the end of Knot Street where it meets Second, and then it goes back to Knot. You guys been around it. You see how that little intersection or whatever got built there. People ain't going to take that way to come back home. They'll leave that way to get bout to ninety-ninety, but to get back home, to swing that, to come around, people are not going to go that way. They're going to come out to Ivy or Township and they're going to go to Locust Street. They jump back on to ninety-ninety to go all the way down. And if you go left, you go out to Ivy. Now, everybody knows Ivy right there in Township is just, it's a joke right there to get out. So my concern is that they do big events on Locust Street. I don't know if you know that. They do big events during the summertime for all the people, and they got the apartment complex and everything there, you know, and, and everybody goes to that park and it's just a packed street, you know? And my thing is, is what is the city going to do to improve safetiness down that street for everybody? You know, I say that they put speed bumps in because everybody flies down that road, you know, there's kids out there and that's, that's my thing. I mean.
You want to put speed bumps on Township?
No, on, on Knot and then Locust Street.
Okay, Knot and Locust, okay.
But this whole thing, I mean, nobody wants it there, but it's going to happen, you know, so that's all I got to say.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Cameron, is that right?
Yeah.
Questions? So I'll just make one, I'll throw out a suggestion for you. We're right in the middle of getting ready to, or we're just beginning to start to do our transportation system plan, they call that the TSB. And when you talk about getting around Canby and how we make that better, come to those meetings and influence that and then it'll make, it'll make it better.
All right.
That's going to, that's going to shoot it out twenty years. So if we got a problem now, twenty years from now, we're going to have a really big problem unless people get involved in that TSB planning. But we appreciate your comments. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I'd love to say I don't like public speaking.
Well, I can't help that part, but ma'am, what, she, she's actually stood up first, so we're going to let her go. This is usually the way it works. Everybody takes, takes a little bit for everybody to get their gumption up.
Okay, my name's Beverly Just. I live on four-oh-three Southwest Locust Street. And my concern is with the two-story building, are they going to be able to look into my backyard? And I'm also about fencing and a little concerned about the traffic.
Okay. Windows. Any questions for Beverly from the commission? Anybody? Okay, I'm sure that the applicant will address those things for you, okay?
Beverly, I guess I have a quick question. Is it safe, do you have one of the one-story houses that surrounds this? Do you have a one-story house that surrounds this? It seems like most houses around there are, so just checking. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sir? Go ahead, your turn.
Hi, I'm Wade Young. I live at four-eight-seven South Knot Street. I have lots of concerns, mostly about adding thirty new families to the end of our street and the traffic and above that that's going to put in place. Not against anyone, you know, living their wildest dreams on making their real estate dreams come true. And, you know, the opportunity to move to a great community, but I think like the impact of that is going to be immense for those of us who actually live on Knot Street or Locust Street or Township. You know, I, I'm going to get the opportunity to look out my front window and see a parking lot and dumpsters. Not to mention my neighbor who's here and right behind me, whose house is on the backside of the planned parking lot, already next to the adjacent apartment complex, and he's going to end up with a parking lot on either side of his house, which is going to do his property value or his less-than-one-year-old child any favors, considering the traffic and everything else. Like, my, my children play in the front yard, which is going to probably quickly become a non-option when thirty new families are zipping up and down the road.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
There's some other stuff written on a note, but I don't have that note.
Okay. Any solutions for the applicant? Any solutions for us?
Thirty new families on, in one end of a road seems pretty aggressive, whether it's an apartment or a condominium. And as far as I've heard from the plan, his plan is to build all these, sell all these, and then be out. And, you know, that doesn't seem like it, you know, works for the rest of the people who, like I said, have to live there.
Okay.
Quickly, could I get your name and address for the record, please?
I said it when I got up here, it's Wade Young and it's four-eight-seven Knot Street.
Thank you.
I'm right across from the driveway of Knot Street.
Okay, anybody else? There we go.
Please state your name and address, too.
Bryce Lewis, owner of four-nine-zero South Knot Street. It's going to be the house with the driveway and the parking right here on the left side. I'm just curious about, we had to sign something a while ago saying our fence line was about eight inches over on one side. And if we were to move our fence or do any changes to the fence, we would have to move that. Now that that is potentially going to be changed by them, are they going to be replacing that fence, changing that section of fence line and potentially putting tall trees or shrubbery up there just for privacy?
So your question is, is the applicant going to be, to be changing the fence and are they going to be putting up any shrubs or anything?
Shrubbery for privacy, building two stories above single-story houses.
Okay. All right, very good. Anything else?
That's it.
Very good. Anybody else? Here we go. We're all rushing the microphone.
She's a tribe, let's get her to go. Oh, she might be.
Oh, her neighbors.
I like that. We get a lot of that in Canby.
It's Miranda Morgan and I'm at three-two-six Southeast Township, the neighbor to the property here. My questions are on fencing, what, again, questions on fencing. What are they going to be the options for that? What does that look like? We currently don't have any fencing right there between it. We used to have lilacs there that were taken out previously. So I'm just curious to know what is going to be put in there and options for that. Is there any kind of compromising on design for that as well? I also have questions on construction. So we've had construction happening in front of our house previously and currently, and I want to know what the plans are for that. We've had issues of different vehicles blocking our driveway and leaving equipment in our driveway. We have quite a long driveway there. And so I'm curious to know what the plans are for that and who I can speak to if there is issues further on down the road on that, so.
Okay. And it was Ryan, is that right?
Miranda.
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 All right. Sir?
Joe Clifford, four nine four South Knott Street. I'm also concerned about traffic. We do get quite a few people that kinda speed through Knott Street already with the increased traffic. Could become part of a problem, meaning more people come through, so. You know, speed bumps may be a good idea, what other options we have? Um, just given the increased traffic we're gonna have on our street. Cause I know a lot of people bypass going through Knott Street to get to Township. Or trying to get to ninety ninety, so, does kinda concern me. I have a twelve-year-old, luckily hasn't been hit by one of these people that tend to speed on that street, but. So that kinda concerns me with the increased level of traffic. I think that's about it.
Christopher Shaw, I'm at four eight six South Knott Street, not to be confused with the four eight six South Knott Street that's being built here. I am that little parcel between the apartment complex to the left, which is the apartments themselves. And which will then be this new parking lot, so yes, I would be surrounded by parking lot, um, if this were to be built. Yes, so if you look at the very bottom, um, there's an apartment complex on the very far left. There's that little tiny rectangle there, and then there is the entirety of.
Right here?
Yes, right, right where your pencil is.
Right there, that's your house?
That is my house.
Perfect, okay.
So I would literally, literally be surrounded by parking lot.
And this is the parking lot here?
That is already a parking.
And they're gonna put another one here?
That is correct. Um, furthermore, uh, just like everyone else, I am a bit concerned about the traffic. But not just for the speeders, because we do have speeders that come through Knott Street, uh, the traffic and parking are kind of an issue as it is. But due to the unique layout of Knott Street, if you look where it angles up, if you look at the bottom where it's angling up and then it goes levels out. That angle, especially at night, is shining lights right into my bedroom window. So increased traffic would increase that, and that is already kind of annoying, but. That's what I have for that.
So, if I may ask you a question, if they had some kind of side of scaring. Shrubbery or something here, keep lights out of your bedroom, that'd be a good thing?
Potentially, but they also mentioned that that little greenway space between my fence and the parking lot would be an open area for playing catch. I would believe that, well, we've got shrubbery in this picture.
Right here?
But I would believe that would, uh, no, right along the, uh, the fence line itself. All the black boxes, yeah. They, they did mention that as part of their open air commons area, so I don't think they would want to cover that anymore than they already have.
All right, any questions for Christopher?
Christopher, are you aware of any incidents with cars continuing straight and running into your property? When they're coming off of Township, if like, yeah, yeah, has that ever happened to you or the prior occupant? We see that in some other areas, that's why I was curious, thank you.
So Judy, uh, anytime you wanna chime in here, just go ahead and do that if you have any questions for these folks, okay?
Chair, if I may, I'm just, I'm trying to catch up with all the testimony. Commissioner Driscoll, as commentary, and this last gentleman that spoke, I think it would be helpful to bring that back and, and focus. Uh, that section sixteen seventy-six is actually for planned unit developments, uh, which this is not a P U D. So that common open space section doesn't apply to this project. Um, and so that's just a clarification here, I think that's an important clarification. Uh, that's, this is not a planned unit development, uh, it is a design review project. I'll let Brianna speak to the landscaping requirements for that, but that's a distinctive element there, uh, that I wanted to bring up.
Yeah, I mean, it was referenced in our documentation as relevant. But I mean, if you're making that determination, I don't have the entirety of the chapter. So I, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at this from like the, you know, what, what are we reviewing tonight, I guess that's the question. Oh, it's seventy, okay, I was looking at seventy-six.
Yeah, and seventy expands to include seventy-six. This is seventy-six.
Okay, so I. It's seventy-six is the P U D section. So I was just looking at that.
We're looking at code.
Yeah.
Bear with us, folks, we're looking at the boring stuff. On a phone.
Seventy is, um.
While they're looking at that, do I have anybody else that wants to speak tonight? Anybody else? And this is your opportunity, okay, I need you to come up and sit down, but don't say anything for just a second.
My name is.
Are you waiting for us?
You want us to go ahead?
Please, please proceed.
Okay, go for it, sir.
Uh, yeah, my name is Alex Helenius, uh, I also live on three two six Southeast Township Road. Um, and so my question, my concern, uh, is that currently Township, um, has, um, kind of off, kind of side street parking, kind of up and down. The side of the property that I'm on, um, and I'm the property that's gonna be right below where that little green spaces with the, um, kind of the circle. So I'm like directly below the first unit to the right. Yeah, in that area right there. Yep, so in that property, and so along that side of Township Road, there's currently kind of like side street parking. Uh, and I'm curious just to see if, uh, that will be, um, used for cars for overflow parking? Or if there will be a way to address or mitigate the amount of parking on Township Road?
I think the answer to your first part of your question is yes, because we deal with it all the time. The second part, we probably will discuss, as far as to whether or not it will be mitigated or not, we'll do our best.
Yeah, cause I don't want it to be used as like, an opportunity for people to permanently park, as like a third car on Township if they can find a way to keep it. Parked within their own property.
When you say it's off-road parking, is it actually the side of the street on Township or it's, it's actually on Township, it's the parking on Township?
Yeah, yeah, it's the, it's the side street, cause it's, the Township has, you know, one lane going, you know, one north, or is it west or east or so, north or south?
Uh, it's going east-west.
East-west, so there's east-west and then there is, um, and then the side by the church, there is no side street parking, but the side. That's on my side of the property does have a side street, kind of sections where, um, you know, people will, um, park.
Yeah.
Uh, short-term, kind of temporary parking. Just wanting, my concern is that mitigating long-term parking, people choosing to, you know, put an RV or a boat or a third car or something and, and using that. As a, as kind of a sneaky way to get past the parking on their own property.
Someone else might be able to confirm this, but I'm pretty sure you can't have anything parked on the street for more than seventy-two hours, technically. And there is a new, um, code enforcement person who just joined the police force. So if you do happen to see something where somebody is egregiously parking out on the street, you can give them a call and then they'll come around and check it out.
Good to know.
Okay, got anything else for us, Christopher?
Uh, nope, that's it.
All right, any questions for Christopher?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anybody else? Have you spoken, sir? We had so many people that I didn't care, you've already spoken. Okay, what's your name? Go for it.
Just wanted to bring notice to the fact that South Knott Street has a lot of children that walk to school in that area. It's not a bus route, it's a walk route, and there's very little kind of sidewalk area as it is, and a lot of people don't really stop for them at the, uh, the Township intersection. So the concern would be not just for the traffic increase, but if there are more families living in those, uh, those complexes. There's just gonna be more, uh, traffic, walking and driving for the, the school area.
Okay, this is on Knott, on Knott Street?
On Knott Street, yes.
Okay.
Flowing into Township as well as they walk over to those schools.
And tell me again what your first name was?
My first name is Christopher.
Christopher, all right, very good, I got you here, all right. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no takers, Dawn, you have something?
Yeah, could we take a pause for? Yeah, oh, yeah, we'll let the, we can have the applicants respond first, yeah.
Okay, after we do the applicant's response or rebuttal.
Yep.
Then we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Yep.
And then we're gonna go into commissioner deliberation, gentlemen, your turn.
Is there a time limit for rebuttal?
Ten minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Two minutes.
All right, I'm gonna address a couple of the concerns. Heard a lot of concerns regarding traffic, uh, and, um, speed of traffic. So the, the applicant understands there's gonna be thirty new buildings on the site, twenty, twenty-six in addition to what's the four that are there today. There, there is gonna be increased traffic and it is gonna impact the neighborhood to some degree, uh, that. The. Sure, are really outside of the applicant's control. That's typically a traffic safety committee that, um, that reviews those types of calming issues. And, so I don't know if there's anything that the applicant can really do as far as, uh, address calming. I can say that, uh, the applicant is improving the frontage to provide wider sidewalks along the limited frontage that we have. The, um, you know, the, the route to the nearest schools, probably Township Road is the. You know, to get to, uh, uh, the middle school and to get out to the elementary schools and probably even to the high school. That's probably the, the better route from the site. The, uh, the number of units proposed is thirty, it's a two-acre site, fourteen units per acre is the minimum. So, uh, I, the, there's only two more units on the site than the minimum allowed. And I, I understand that any unit has a little more impact, traffic-wise. But just remember that the applicant didn't set the, the zoning for the site, he's just trying to build to the zoning. And in this case, he's building slightly more than that, so, you know, regarding traffic. I, I don't have any great solutions, we understand there'll be an issue, we're complete the frontage improvements to the extent that we're able to. And, uh. If there's anything we can do regarding, uh, fencing to eliminate glare on somebody's window or, or plantings, we're, we're happy to oblige. On this plan, please keep in mind the symbols are shown, uh, so you can see them at the scale. And they're not all gonna be as big as they're obviously shown on the plan. So there, uh, there will be room for fencing, there will be room for, for plantings, uh, for shielding if, if need be. I'm gonna have the applicant address some of the other issues.
Uh, just to add on to what Pat said, on Township Road, we're actually straightening that, um, wave out that used to go around the tree that was on the neighboring property. So that is, in my opinion, uh, improving safety on Township, uh, removing that. Something that Beverly brought up was, uh, fencing, I heard that a few times. There's, because it's a big site with a lot of different types of fencing. There's probably four or five different types of fencing going on, some of it's in good condition, some of it's not. I will be replacing any fencing that's not, um, up to par. So there's a lot that's not there, too, so it'll be all nice and new. She also asked about windows, uh, the windows that are on the backside of the units next to her house. Uh, it'll be one window upstairs and it's a master bedroom, um, suite that would be on that side of the, of the building. And we did put, uh, it's, it's, um, there's, there's a lot, uh, what do you call those, arbor with, um, roses climbing on it. To help, uh, shield the visual where her house is, there's also other shrubs and trees. Uh, someone mentioned buy, sell, and I'm out, uh, yes, but no. I'm establishing an HOA, I'm establishing C C N Rs, there, so when I sell all the units, I will be out as an owner. But the HOA will take over and administer and enforce the C C N Rs that I create. So all the owners will have those documents and they will know what's allowed, what's not allowed. And it's up to the HOA to enforce those rules. In, in my opinion, that's gonna make this a nice quality, uh, project where people wanna live. And, you know, if you, if you buy into this, you buy into the C C N Rs, so it's, it's just part of the, the program. And if, if they don't appeal to you, then it's probably not where you're gonna buy. Something about the fencing gap, I, so back in the day when I had this surveyed. Long, long story short, um, there was a gap and three, I believe, three neighbors, uh. Signed a document that said the fence line is the property line and the gap has been absorbed, something to that effect. And the fence will be built where that document says the fence will be built. Which they vote, the three, I believe it was three, have agreed to that, uh, in the past or the previous owners agreed to it, cause I did it quite a while ago. Construction, I'll be more than happy to post the site with, uh, my contact information. So when construction does happen, if there's any issues, more than happy to, to deal with it, I'm always on site. Uh, I'm also the contractor, so I will be doing, uh, the construction of the buildings. And vehicles, there's plenty of parking on site for any vehicles, so I don't see that they would be parking in the road, first, per se. Or if they are in the road, it wouldn't be crossing driveways, that's just not acceptable. I used to own four eighty-six South Knott Street, uh, the gentleman that had, um, asked about the, any cars running into his house. When I owned it, no cars hit it either. The tree that's there, there's boulders under it and that's required instead of plants, because the plants suck the water from the roots of the tree. And boulders don't, so that's why there's boulders under that tree, uh, it's not to stop cars from running into it. That's, that's what I have. Is there anything I missed?
I think we're good.
Judy? Anything for the applicant?
No, thank you though.
Okay. All right, gentlemen. We are going to now, I guess what we'll do is we will go to the
Do we take a, a short break?
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing now. And we're gonna take a five-minute break, we'll be back at seven thirty-five. And we will then have commissioner deliberation regarding the application. Good? Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Does that mean we can all leave?
No.
I'm saying like, you just did the public part of the meeting.
No, no, we can stay here. Yeah, so we're gonna give them a break, start checking on something on the code side, and then we can be more have a conversation about it and then move on.
That's fine.
Sorry Judy, we're waiting for staff to get back, we're waiting for staff to get back with some information.
Okay, no worries, thank you Dan.
Here we go. All right, folks, grab your seats, we will continue on, ready in five, four, three, two, one. Is my recording in progress? Didn't talk to me. Okay, very good, we are going to continue with the planning commission meeting and the, the, we're getting into the commissioner discussion on, oh, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy, where did it go? Yes. There we go, I lost it. DR twenty-three oh three and CUP, nope, that's not right. Here we go, BR twenty-three oh six and PLA twenty-three oh five. Just for you folks out there, our abbreviations, we tend to not clarify ourselves very much. A DR means design and review and the PLA is a lot line adjustment, okay? So just FYI on that. Okay, we're gonna go into commissioner deliberation, we got new maps here in front of us. And Dawn, I'm gonna start with you because you said you had some information.
I, I do, and just so for some clarification here, one of the other elements, and just recognizing our code needs to be updated, is that looking at sixteen seventy-six in isolation doesn't give you the full picture of our code, you have to look at sixteen seventy and there's a loose connection between condominiums and planning unit developments, which thematically then goes to sixteen seventy-six. So that all being said, unfortunately, there's no definition of common open, open areas or open space in our code. I mean, arguably, this is a condominium, so arguably, all the space is in common. It's not like, you know, you have an apartment situation, it's, it's all owned commonly in common. So that may not necessarily give a lot of direction here, but the planning commission in sixteen seventy-six also talks about the planning commission's discretion on that area about common open areas, that same section that Commissioner Driscoll provided. So I did wanna point that out, that, and then Brianna has brought, I'm gonna let her speak to the mapping that she just brought out on that. So I probably spoke too soon, but I was looking at sixteen seventy-six and saying this is not a PUD, but sixteen seventy talks about condominiums being treated as, as PUDs, so I'm catching up here. But that, like I said, you know, essentially, you know, there, we see this as a distinction between like an apartment development and a condominium in the sense of what is in fact an open area, I mean, so those are, those, we see those being different in the situation. But Brianna, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you Dawn, I am about to share the screen of what I just passed out to the commissioners, there's also a copy if anyone would like to look at it here in the chambers tonight, but this is the landscape plan with the calculations. Ooh, there's so many things on my screen, sorry. C three, C four, here we go, so it's very small, but the hatched areas are what they are considering open space here. So you can see they're, they're not considering sort of the private back areas here, but Commissioner Driscoll is correct, we have the two picnic benches here, the linear space here, the, the little, there's a bench on that little patio type there. So again, the, the hatched areas are those open spaces and they teeny tiny, the teeniest, tiniest calculations. Sorry, these are large format plans, so, but there we go, there is, there is that calculation. But to your point, Commissioner Driscoll, the way you are calculating it is different here. Staff does believe this is valid, but I do understand what you're saying, that there is not a definition, definition of open space, and I do think that that is a problem. So I just wanted to further clarify that.
Yeah, open space and located in a common area.
In a common area.
Yeah, if you're selling it.
Well, especially the A, a common area kind of says what, you know, that you could, you could interpret it that way, so I completely understand.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, another thing for staff to put on their fix-it, fix-it, fix-it list. Okay. I think that we're going to just, we'll just go around the room. So Judy, do you wanna start with any comments that you have?
No, I don't have any comments, I mean, we've been through a couple of these, those that's been around a while, and it's hard, R two in a neighborhood, even though almost everybody surrounding it is also on an R two lot and, I don't know, I think if I were one of the individuals in a single-family lot, I'd be upset too. But R two is R two. And so what we have to do is a commission, which I think we do, is hold them to the letter of the law to the extent we can to say, you know, if there's a conditional use or a variance or something, we, we treat those really seriously, because we know that this is difficult in a neighborhood. And this is a bit of a mixed neighborhood, but again, it's not the first time we've had this, we've had this on streets with houses and churches and same thing, but it's hard. And so I feel for the neighbors, but I also feel for the developer who has rights. So I, I understand some of the, I don't hate to use the word exception, but some of the things that are a little different than, than standard, like some of the driveway, the, the, you know, space between driveways and there's some small exceptions with that. So all in all, I, you know, I'm all right with it.
Go ahead.
We've been learning quite a bit about what the housing needs for Canby is, and so we see a project like this that takes a lot of open space in the middle of town in a high-density area and turns it into housing, it's really kind of fits into all the plans that the city council and, and the surrounding region has set us up for. You know, this, this is a high dens, high, uh, high-density zone and it's been set by council and if, if we grant any exceptions to it that aren't supported by law, then, then they can easily appeal and go around us. And so, you know, we generally use the law as our, as our guiding star when it comes to what we can and can't do. And this fits the city of Canby's plan in to, to the best of its ability, it's an odd-shaped parcel of land that is going to be utilized. And it's, and again, it's, we've run into this before where somebody's putting a large unit next to some single-family homes and, and, and also been told that they could have built something bigger. And built something bigger without coming to us to ask for variances. And so when I'm looking at the project, I see that it, it looks good and it's in fitting with the zone and I can't see any reason to oppose it.
Okay, hold on.
You know, I, I guess, looking at all this, it, I, I feel for both, both parties here. You know, one thing on the parking, I mean, it's nice that you have the parking in there, but we all know people are gonna park on the street, but that's not a developer problem, that's a city of Canby problem. That, it's gonna happen. You know, I think we're putting a lot of units into a small place, but again, that, I think, we can't sit there and deny it, that's not a developer problem, that's a city of Canby problem. It just brings it back to the fact that we need to address all this, sooner the better, right? You know, it is, one of the, one of the comments in all this was quality versus quantity. I absolutely agree with that, you know, I'm accused of a lot of, a lot of people in this town of being too much for growth. I argue that. I want controlled growth and I want good quality. And I, I think this is more quantity, but again, I, you know, developers met all the criteria, so it's hard to, it's hard to deny this and they, it would get one on a, on appeal, but I think it's something we need to be taking up seriously and soon.
So I'd like to argue that we have every standing to say no to this, because because we've talked about this in our long-term planning when we're looking at townhomes in other areas. What we were to look at criteria for townhomes in R one or R one point five, we had a very specific conversation about how important we felt it was to make sure that there was green space for those homeowners. And here, when we're looking at, they're basically, it's the landscape plan and what they're considering open area. Open area is green space along driveways and along roads. And then a couple tiny little places next to township and behind some dumpsters. And then this little stretch that, oh, we can play football in, but there's gonna be a bunch of trees, and it, it's still kind of a busy road next to where the cars are parking. Like, to me, all of that, if we use their calculations, is still roughly seven thousand square feet when we need a minimum of thirteen. And to me, this says we're prioritizing putting thirty units in. We're only twenty-eight are required, and we're not giving thirty families because there's not gonna be a lot of single people or retirees who wanna be in two-story homes. We have people who are desperate to get a home for their families, and they're gonna be buying these for about four fifty plus apiece. We owe them more than the twenty-square-foot patch in the back of their yard that's fenced in. Like, we're not giving them anything, really. And I think that we're very specific in the code that it should be a minimum of fifteen percent of the site devoted to open space and located in a common area. Once these have been sold, these tiny little green patches between driveways, that's not a common space. I'm not gonna be in building two and complain in your yard in building seven. You'd probably be like, what the heck are you doing in my yard? So it's not common space. Green area around driveways is not common space. It's open, it's landscaped, but it's not useful to anybody. It's decorative. Useful space doesn't meet the letter of the law, and I don't think that we should be approving it as is.
Anybody, anything else? Okay.
Well, if, okay, so it's pretty clear that if we, we don't approve something that is completely legal according to Canby code, then they could just go to Luba. Luba will probably send them to council, and council will send it back to us saying, there's no reason to disprove this, and it's actually a matter of state law.
But if we, I'm just gonna enter.
Hold on a second, hold on a second.
Okay.
Okay, but here we have a point where we have an undefined standard. And, and that kind of pushes the whole question kind of to the center of the table. I mean, you know, but I'm not sure that, how Luba would view that.
They're not gonna have sixty percent if they don't have the two points.
I don't, I, I'm just saying, my, I'm just putting forth as a question is, it's like, how do you think Luba will stand on this? I mean, with the letter of the law, is there any reason? I mean, are, are, would we be wasting people's time by, by not allowing this to go forward?
There's not, I mean, really fundamentally, clear and objective standards, and there's not a, unfortunately, you know, for better, for worse, there's not a clear definition of common open area. There just is not, and so I think it would be very difficult to withhold a denial of this based on the fact that we don't have that defined in our code. That, that, to me, I, I just, I don't think we would be successful on appeal. I just don't think that would be, we would be successful.
So we're just going to roll with it?
Well, they, they exceed the overall. I mean, I, I agree, and I guess maybe the lesson learned here as we move into the housing standards, and I'm thinking about all the things that are being said, and in particular for planning unit developments because that is one of the efficiency measures, is that clearly needs to be defined better, brought back and understood as to what that is. We're talking about a condominium tonight, not a PUD, but they're blended in, in the way the code is addressed. But I'm thinking directly about, to Commissioner Hutchinson's point, like, having defined standards for the future and what we're dealing with, because I think right now, we just, we would not have anything to stand on since it's not defined in our code. And then comes back to, you know, common definition of what that is, which can be argued, you know. But I, I, I don't think that's, in the context of like looking at this as a material deficiency, I think it'd be very difficult to be successful on appeal.
There's two things that are undefined, open space and common area. It's open.
Well, I, I think the fact that they're undefined is a legal point, which is kind of what I'm getting to, and I agree with you. I know that open space has a meaning, you know.
So does common space.
And common space also has a meaning. But within a legal reference of our code, we have not defined what that is, and so they cannot say whether we have met or not met that criterion. And so I think because it's undefined, it ends up being landing in the applicant's field. But, you know, I'm, I'm no legal expert here. That's the reason why I deferred to Dawn. I mean, it's, because it seems to me like, one of the things that I run into is that we have clear standards for what we want out of our community. We have the code, which is actually approved by council, which sometimes is mushy or doesn't agree with our values, we feel, as a town. But because it's in the code, that means someone can take it to another court and say, here's the rules we're playing by, and we are playing by the rules, and they say we're not, and, and win on appeal. And then a bunch of money gets spent and time gets delayed, and, and then, you know, we're short on our goal of adding units to town, and, and the developer is out money, and the homeowner's out, out money, who is gonna sell these or redevelop them. So, you know, I mean, I just don't, I just hate wasting effort if it's, if it's a losing battle, is mainly where I'm coming from.
I'm just inclined to see it, just automatically assume it's a lost battle. I hear what you're saying, and I understand that that probably comes across as being very stubborn. I'm not part of Luba. I'm not super familiar with how they ultimately end up ruling on these things. But, um, yeah, I think we're, we're doing a disservice to all of the people who will live here in perpetuity, to leave them with not even like a respectable picnic space for thirty houses. It shall be devoted to open space and located in a common area.
Thirty condos.
Thirty condos.
Yeah.
Being sold.
Not houses, though. They're condos.
Thirty individually-owned units.
Judy, anything?
Yeah, I just, I really, I so understand these conversations, and we've had some of these before where it really fried me. You know, the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law, things I was vehemently opposed to, but black and white told me I, I really couldn't be, because I can be a zealot, as you guys know. It's hard, and it's hard to cross every T and dot every I of code, too. I mean, where there, yeah, there's work to be done, and we can put on our list to do differently than we should, and of course, we will, as, you know, we develop, you know, the standards as we grow, but right now, it is what it is, and it, and it can be really painful. So I feel for, I feel for everybody's conversation here. I really do. I think anybody that owns an R two lot or lives next door to an R two lot or buys near an R two lot, and we've had this conversation before, really needs to do a lot of due diligence in today's world, in almost any town, not just our town, because all towns are growing, so it's, it's a tough one. Anyways, I feel bad. I've felt bad before, and I still feel bad, but it is what it is.
All right. Thank you, Judy. Greg, anything else?
Don, if we approve this tonight, can we hold their feet to the fire in terms of working with the property owners on fencing and shrubs? Like, if Bev can do something?
I mean, I, I think that is an open, I mean, I, to the extent that you want to condition this based on, you know, you know, screening materials that, you know, and again, I think the applicant is, you know, I, I know we've closed the hearing, but I think if there is something in particular that you heard tonight, this evening, about screening, that could be in the form of a condition on, you know, what, what, you know, that's part of that situation here, I think, to address. So if there's.
I, I think personally, I would like to see that in this kind of a development, to work with those neighbors, make sure they're as happy as we can get them.
I'd also like to condition sprinklers as recommended by the fire department.
Okay.
Did the fire department make that?
Recommended sprinklers.
Is that something, Brianna, that you can address?
That's something we would condition.
Can we do that?
Okay, was it in?
Did you see it in the conditions?
Speaker.
Um, it's, that, that was their feedback. They said that they would like to see sprinklers in it. They didn't say they required them. They said they'd like to see them.
Gotcha. Let me double-check in the conditions, and if it's not in there, we will add it.
Okay.
Technically, no.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's up to the county, though. Is that what you're gonna say?
So the, the fire department, if you read what it said there, it says, I haven't firmly related the data, but it says if it's required by building ordinance.
Yeah.
These buildings are all going to be built as school-built homes. They have firewalls all the way through. They have air gaps between the units. The code doesn't require sprinklers in that type of a building. They require it in apartments where you don't have the air gap and the firewalls between the units. So I'm spending a bunch of money with the firewalls and doing it like I said, at home, it's not a problem.
Okay. Okay, we're good. Thank you. Not being mean, I just need to make sure we keep with decorum here. So here's, anybody else got anything? I'm gonna chime in on some things. We talked about fencing, shrubbery, and so on and so lo, so forth with the neighbors along the property line. We are now talking about adding a condition regarding that. So commissioners be thinking about how you'd like to have that worded if you're gonna make a motion. I think that the applicant has pretty much said that he's gonna work with any kind of fencing and whatnot to make the neighbors happy. So those of you who brought that up, hopefully, that takes care of that. Construction vehicles. Where's the lady that, right there? Again, he said his phone number's gonna be posted, so we're, we're good with that. And then we've got, so here's, here's the deal, what it boils down to as far as the public comments tonight. The, the, the preponderance of what I heard was, is the traffic and the speed of the traffic on Knott and, and Township. So here's what I'm going to recommend, no matter which way this goes tonight. I don't know how it's gonna go. But first, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Dawn, first Wednesday of every month. Oh, yeah, Jennifer's on the traffic committee. The traffic committee meets, it's out at the public facilities, the public shop out there off of.
Public Works Building off of Territorial.
Uh, uh, Public Works Building off of Territorial. It starts at eight o'clock in the morning on,
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty on Wednesdays. Now, these are the folks, very, they're, they're very, very little heard of in our planning process, but they do a lot of stuff. If you're thinking that speed bumps would help, if you're thinking stop signs would help, if you're thinking, I don't know, posted state police help, cameras, spike strips, whatever, okay? Is, is, is gonna fix the situation, you need to be there at that meeting at eight thirty in the morning, the first Wednesday of every month.
Second. Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday, sorry. But that's where you need to go to, to get those kind of things taken care of. Now, I can tell you, as a personal advocate of this, we needed striping and, and stop signs put on the street where I live. And I went to the meeting, I proposed it to them. They actually all came out, the intersection that was talked about, they did a field trip, and we ended up with, with, uh, striping and everything that we needed to take care of it, and they're gonna monitor it ongoing. So these issues, we can't do this here at the planning commission. We handle land-use things. If you had a problem with traffic and speed and safety and all of that, those are the guys and gals to go talk to. And they got a lot of pull with the city council. So I just direct you over there. I know it's kind of a crummy thing on a Wednesday morning at eight thirty in the morning to get there because you're not all retired like I am and can be there and finish my coffee, okay? But that's when they meet, and send a representative, send a letter. Do it, do it on a, what is it, the Zoomy thing, okay? Do that. They're, they're open to that, too. But that's where those speed issues and safety issues need to be taken care of, okay? So, I, you know, it's just like we've talked about, the other commissioners have talked about, we have zoning, we have zoning for a reason. This fits the zoning. It's compact. One question I do have for staff is, is the parking in this, in this project, we're, we're, we're having one in the driveway and one on street. Is that the way you counted it?
No, it's one inside the garage and one on the driveway.
Okay, so we're gonna end up with on-street parking here is what's gonna happen.
It should be painted fireland on both sides because it's only twenty-six feet wide, or twenty feet wide once they have the rollable curb. So you can't park on those, on either side.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is this is something we could do. Is there any, any reason that we could post that no parking?
No parking?
Require signs that say no, no street parking.
Jenny, excuse me, Commissioner Driscoll, would you mind, do you have CFD's comments in front of you?
Not in front of me, no.
If you'll give me just one second, I'll pull them up. Because I am not opposed to adding a condition. I just want to see what Canby Fire District actually said here.
I just remember that it's twenty-six feet wide, six of it's gonna be the rollable curb, and based on other things we've seen.
That is correct.
It just has to be painted on both sides, and you can't park. A signage.
And I think, this is Judy, the assumption is they'll probably, as overflow, they'll use those eleven guest park spots.
And I, I agree with you, Judy. I think that that is the assumption, but that is not what's gonna happen.
Right, no, I, yeah, we agree.
Lord save them if they ever wanna have a kid's birthday party. Because it specifically calls out along Knott and Township, but not inside. I'm not opposed to adding it, but it's just.
You wanna give, I mean, I, I think just reading those.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think, let's, let's go ahead and read what we have.
So the no parking painting of the curbs is usually typically determined by Canby Fire Department on access and safety. We have their notes on the proposal here, and the only thing I see mentioning painting or signage regards to no parking, it says, "The driveways and road need to be approved by the fire truck department before occupancy, and the curb lines on South Knott and Township Road adjacent to the driveways need to be painted red." So that does not say to me inside the complex. I am not opposed to adding that. I hesitate only because I don't know as development services if we have that authority.
I mean, I, I would agree with Brianna. I, I think that I don't feel comfortable adding a fire condition beyond what they've given us and conditions of approval. I mean, I just, that's not our purview. That, that's why we asked for their comments. I mean, I, I don't.
Well, okay, I, I'm not, in my opinion, this has nothing to do with the fire department.
Okay.
Fire department is, 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 if they got no cars parked on the street, they're gonna be able to get through there a whole lot easier than they are if there're gonna be cars parked on the street. My direction towards this no parking is more for the fact that we've got such limited common space play area for these kids, okay? If we're not gonna have grassy areas for them to play in, they're gonna play in the street. My grandsons have got a half an acre to play in. Where do they play? In the street, okay? But that being said, if we're not gonna have the open space, then I'm, that street is, all of a sudden becomes very, very. that street is, all of a sudden becomes very, very popular.
And it seems like it should be in our purview because in the rules, it says that anything less than twenty-eight feet wide can't have parking even on one side. It has to be a minimum of twenty-eight to have parking on one side. So wouldn't, if we address that in the code, wouldn't we have some ability to post,
I mean.
"You can't park here because it's not at least twenty-eight feet wide."
I think largely we are deferring to Canby Fire because our public work standards rarely, we rarely run into the situation on that where there's a restriction and there, Canby Fire is not really part of the city, they're a district. So it's not like it's exactly the same organization. So, I think if we wanna word it to the point where I, I mean, obviously, they would probably need to agree with that to some extent, but.
We could say at the discretion of CF, but that doesn't get to Commissioner Ewart's point. That it's more about the adjacent open space and not fire.
I, I don't, as far as I'm concerned, the fire, I get what the fire department is saying.
Yep.
I get it.
Yep.
But that's not what I'm driving here. But drive, what's my driving here is the kids need a place to play. If we're not gonna have yards, if we're not gonna have open space, they're gonna play in the street. We need to make it a safe place, in my opinion.
They painted the one right by me where it was the exact same situation. It's twenty-six feet, six of it's rollable curb, and they painted it Fire Lane the whole way on both sides.
Okay. I don't know that we need to mark it Fire. Do we need to mark it Fire Lane?
Well, that's kind of the justification for not parking in some regards because if they don't have enough space to get through.
Playground. Okay, um, you had a comment?
Well, I was just wondering if this could be handled by the HOA contract. It's like, you buy a place here, you sign a contract that says you're not gonna park on the street. It probably is part of their plan to have it in there.
I don't know that we have purview to, 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 to design. I'd rather have it as a condition of approval and.
No, we can require the existence of an HOA and CCNRs, but we can't determine what's in them because we don't regulate.
Right.
So.
Right. We'd, we'd get in trouble there. So, so there's that. So I've got, we talked about that.
Commissioner Ewart?
Yes, sir.
I mean, you see, you see red, painted red with no parking all the time. Does that, that doesn't always mean fire. I don't see why we couldn't make that a condition.
Yeah.
Why would the fire department care? I would think it would only help them.
It really comes down to, you know, is there a supportable code standard? I mean, and again, the, the commission can, you know, make conditions, but typically they're based on supportable code standards.
Can I ask a question? Is there a difference between private roads like this and public roads?
Yeah.
There is. I think, you know, private roads are obviously not meeting typical cross-sections. Commissioner Juroch, they're not making, meeting the cross-section of a public road. They are treated differently on, you know, including the pavement materials are, are less on a private street than they are on a public street.
Okay.
So, and, and I think the fire accessibility is still an issue on private streets, but they're, they are treated somewhat differently.
Okay. Thank you. I'm always asking questions out of ignorance and I appreciate the education, Dawn.
You're welcome.
I mean, I live on a private road and we put in our own speed bumps, but we won't go there.
Okay. Oh, I lost my thought. The, I don't think I had anything else. So Dawn, what you're saying is, as far as the no street parking, you, you don't think it's supportable?
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering what this, what this, the clarion objective standard is, and that's, you know, back, I mean, yes, that could be put in there. The applicant, you know, could appeal that. I mean, that's, I, I understand the issue about the situation with, you know, worrying about, you know, kids playing, that kind of thing. I, I get it.
What's that?
Okay.
Okay. What's that?
The applicant has elected to paint the curbs red.
Perfect.
Cool.
All right. Anybody else have anything?
I would be interested to see the traffic, as traffic study after occupancy to look at what those actual local intersections look like, but I don't know that that's.
Second Wednesday.
Yeah, just the fact that I think it might be designated as another safer route to school, that's a concern, but that would be improvements that would go through the city.
Okay. So here's what we've talked about. For those of you who are thinking about making a motion, we've talked about adding a condition regarding screening and fencing for the applicant to make sure that that gets carried out. The building sprinkle, that doesn't sound like that's gonna happen because it doesn't work for this particular type of a build. The sidewalk on Knott Street is, needs to be added into that. You already have that? It's in it already?
No, I.
Okay, yeah. And I'm just talking about for whoever makes the motion, we need to have this all in there. And then, and then the no on-street parking, if that's something that you want. So, the way we will do this is one of you will make a motion. We will discuss the motion. We'll call the question and then we'll vote on it, okay? I need somebody to move.
Okay. I, I cannot pronounce his name. Tivoli? Is that a name?
Close enough. I think we know what you're talking about.
I move that we approve the Tivoli Commons DR twenty-three dash oh six and PLA da, twenty-three dash oh five with the conditions of the screening of the shrubs and the fencing, working with the property owners. What was the other one?
Sidewalk completion.
Sidewalk completion.
And the no on-street parking.
And then, and the no, no parking, the painting the, the side of the streets no, red with no parking signs.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. I need somebody to call the question.
I have a question.
Okay.
How many votes passed?
What's that?
Sir, how many votes passed today?
So it'd be the majority, so there, it would have to be three.
Majority and attendance.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, did you call the question? Yes, no, somebody? Question's been called. All those in favor of approval of DR twenty-three oh six and PLA twenty-three oh five with the addition of the three conditions and conditions in the staff report signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 I'm an a.
I'm an aye. So it pass, all those, okay, so we've, we've got one no and four yeses. It passes. Sorry about that. My math is not very good. It passes. Very good. Gentlemen, good luck with your project. Second Wednesday of the month at eight thirty. What's that? I'll go, I'll go for you. She actually sits on the, on the commission, so. Very good. All right, thank you. Good discussion. And we are going to move on to, that was our only public hearing tonight. Items of interest from the staff. Go, Dawn.
Just a few quick updates on upcoming items. Our next planning commission work session is on February twelfth. We'll be back again talking about housing efficiency measures, cottage cluster.
Just a second. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. I really, really appreciate it. Okay? Thank you. Sorry, Dawn.
Yeah, no worries. It's all good. Thank you for letting folks out. Housing efficiency measures, and that'll, there'll be a continuation of that discussion with the consultants on March eleventh. So February twelfth will be kind of a revisitation with, of what our current code allows. And I think we heard some good testimony tonight about items that, as we get into this, where there may need to be some more definitional issues. So that's February twelfth, housing efficiency, then March eleventh, housing efficiency. Possibility of a joint work session on housing production strategies and housing needs analysis on February twenty-first. This is not something the council has on their agenda yet, but it's likely that would be either February twenty-first or March sixth. I really just kinda wanna bring everybody up to speed. We're having a lot of conversation with Department of Land Conservation and Development on everything ranging from housing, residential housing need, expansion, and what that is, and how much that is, and, and that's a very dynamic conversation right now in terms of like, you know, the acreage and the fluctuation of that based on what they call participation rates, which is assumptions on conversion of vacant and partially vacant land over the next twenty years. So there's a lot of dynamics with that. I think it's important that the planning commission and council understand that. Then on housing production, there's conversations about housing production strategies that you have not seen, the council's not seen, which will have to address other things on income levels, dealing with a range of issues from housing affordability for the elderly, disabled, those with less income, ethnic diversity. Those, those are some other elements that we'll have to deal with, and including homelessness in terms of at least strategies. Because those are all identified in the housing production strategy and they're all part of our package here. So that's something that will likely be, it'll be work session oriented, but just to bring everybody up to speed.
So is this in, in regards to the comp plan that we're putting together?
It is. It's directly.
They're changing the playing field here?
It's directly, well, and, and part of this is we are already in that field. It's just how much, for example, is there just a small amount of residential need to expand over the next twenty years? Is it a medium amount? And when I'm saying small, is it ten acres? Is it fifty acres? Is it a hundred acres? What is that? And that's being kind of discussed and very micro detail with Department of Land Conservation and Development on elements.
Then I guess my question is, are they giving us an extension on the drop dead date for getting this all done?
And they've already done that since there's a sequential urban growth boundary expansion that we went through a process and they've supported that, and Clackamas County supported that, which gives us quite a bit of time actually to do everything. So this, that rush to get everything done by June twenty-two-four is no longer in place. I'd still like to be timely, but I also wanna make sure that everybody's on board on where we're going because it's, there's, you know, it's somewhat evolving in the sense of like, when you do an urban growth boundary expansion, especially for residential, it gets pretty involved. I think it's one thing to not do an expansion and there's a little less involvement, and to do an expansion is a pretty big deal, especially for residential. Not so much for employment lands, but for residential. It's a very big deal in Oregon. So, I'm just kinda forewarning you that like that may be coming in Mar, in February or March range because there's quite a bit of input we've received recently from Department of Land Conservation and Development on those topical issues. And it does have an influence on the other things that we're gonna do on the comp plan and transportation system plan. The industrial side of things, very little conversation in terms of that issue. That's been, you know, economic opportunity analysis has been adopted, but there's a ton of discussion on housing. There'll also be some, you know, on the urban growth boundary expansion, issues, there'll be issues about park expansion within the urban growth boundary. That'll be part of it. We've also engaged with the school district on whether they need land or not in the next twenty years. And so that's another piece of this discussion. But housing, of all the elements, housing is the most concentrated discussion.
So I guess then my question would be, would we still move ahead with the industrial component of the comp plan and get that, can we get that put to bed?
Yeah, and I think all that's gonna move forward. I mean, this is not gonna take months and months and months, but I'm just, I feel like it's important as.
It's the state of Oregon.
It's as we shift. There's, there's constant shifting. I don't wanna be at a hearing saying, "You told me it was this and now, and now it's zero."
Think Walnuts Street Extension.
Yeah, I mean, no, it's, it's one of those things. I'm not saying it's, I don't know where it's gonna land exactly, and it's, you know, these are guidance principles. They're not like written down an absolute formula. So it's pretty challenging, but it's, it's something that we're working through. So I don't think this is a major delay, but I want, but there's, there's an educational component. All this is important as well as we go through that. Another invite again, Wednesday, Community Summit number three, six P M. I see Michael has that in front of him. And so please, if you're, you know, available, it'd be great. Baker Prairie School, great facility. We will not run out of room. There's three hundred seats in the lunchroom. So I'm believing that statement to be true. Great, a nice sound system, state-of-the-art school. Love the facility. So six P M. And I'd love to have you there. And we'll go through the same exercise we did for Community Summit number two. And I just wanna encourage you all to attend that. Those are the main items here that, you know, kind of over the next month. And the reason I bring you up the housing needs stuff and housing production is, you know, there could be a slight delay on these, but again, I, I, I just wanted to, because we were like on this like formulaic schedule, and I would hope we will continue on that, but that may slide slightly and just, that may not be disappointing to anybody on the council, but, you know, or the commission rather, but I just wanted to point that out. And that's really all I had on my end was, was those items.
Okay. Thank you, Dawn. Question for staff?
I've got a couple. Can we make some time to define open space and common area in the very near future?
Yeah, and I, I think that's really, we're, since we're doing the PUD efficiency measures, I mean, that completely makes sense to make that clear. Yeah.
Cross the board.
You said a couple of things.
Yeah, the other thing was, would you guys please follow up with TKS and find out why when they do these studies, they don't actually look at the streets that are most immediately impacted? I mean, they just looked at the two closest main intersections and called it good. And if you actually look at these streets that they're on, there's a lot of visibility issues and a lot of traffic concerns that it would have been nice for them to address in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah.
And we've seen that repeatedly.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Greg, anything? Judy?
I have a couple of things. One is to follow up on what Commissioner Driscoll just asked because I think we've had a couple applicants in the past where they contracted their own traffic study. And tonight what we heard was, well, they had no control over that study, but can't they do their own? Can't they contract for their own?
They, they absolutely can, and we've seen that, Commissioner Juroch. We've seen some folks have hired their own people to do the study. I would, you know, it's, it is, you know, that is something the applicant is, has a choice. They can hire the contracted DKS to do it, or they can hire their own firm. I think to the point about more clarity on, even if it was a high level, like, why didn't he address these other streets? That would be helpful. I mean, I, I think, I think the answer on some of this is that those were not significant, but if the report doesn't say that, then everybody's like, well, why weren't those addressed? And I think that's part of the.
I think I, yeah, that makes perfect sense. I think I was more reacting to their comment that they don't really control it. But if they can contract for their own, they certainly do control that.
Yeah, and I don't know if, I, that statement, I'm not really sure like what to make of it, because I mean, ultimately, it, it is their, whether or not it's.
Totally in their control.
Like, you know, it's, they're contracted, you know, I mean, there's some ownership that cuts both ways is what I'm saying.
I was always under the impression that the city encouraged applicants to use DKS, that it was pretty much like, hey, we use DKS. We want you to use DKS. That did.
And, and I would say that we, I'm, I'm not sure if we're encouraging them necessarily, but I think they, there are some economies of scale. I don't think that they have, they have the modeling that they've done here. I don't think that they have, they have the modeling that they've done here. They understand our system. I don't think you're going to get a better deal from most of the other firms out there because they already have the inside information on this. And I, I mean, I, there's a number of considerations, yeah.
That we require applicants to get their traffic scope from DKS, and that's what determines the full study. So, in the sense that the applicant didn't have a choice to get the scope from DKS, we do require that. So, you know, once you have the scope, you can determine if you want to continue with DKS or use a different consultant. But the city has defined parameters in RTSP that DKS uses to create the scope. So that first step is pretty conscriptive.
Yeah.
And I thank you, Brianna. That's excellent. I, you know, I think that really that is setting the boundaries of this. I think it's, the questions tonight were more about like the sub-details, not just the ma, well, don't skip to the conclusion and say, well, these major streets don't have an issue, but like the neighbors are like concerned about something that's smaller, you know? I mean, and like, having some text in there makes a lot of sense in that sense.
Yeah, I just think if I were a developer and I wanted to be a good neighbor and I had a sense of that neighborhood, I would get a traffic study that would, but that's up to them, you know, that would cover more, but that's up to them. And then a couple of quick procedural things, and we don't need to answer this, but I'm kind of a stickler about meeting procedure. And so we have time limits that we've talked about. And I don't know if the time limits are wrong or the script that Commissioner, Commissioner or Chair Ewart had was wrong, but we said staff had five minutes and the applicant had 10 minutes. And we go way beyond that, and tonight wasn't the only time. So I don't know if his script is wrong or we need to revisit those time limits.
I agree.
Dan has already beat you to the punch on that, but let me, let me go back.
Well, we don't need to talk about it. We just maybe need to revisit it. But you can't, you cannot show up to a meeting with a 15-page PowerPoint and expect to cover that in five minutes. It just doesn't happen. Period.
And I, I agree that five minutes, we oftentimes go over that, what we're.
Way over, way, and not just you, the applicant too. So, I know we have a timer there. Do we, are we not using it?
The applicant actually has 20 minutes and they were pretty much on that. I mean, they went over slightly, but I would say our, what the goal here is that previously, and some of you remember this, we were spending a staff 45 minutes to 50 minutes, and we became the applicant. We should not be the applicant. And so like, everybody thought we were the applicant. It was our project. It's not our project. It's the applicant.
It's better. It's better. But yeah, I wrote down what Dan said. He said 10 minutes for the, for the applicant. So I don't know if the script is wrong. Anyway, no need to talk about that right now. The other weird thing is, I, when I'm going through the reports, which I, the reports are so great and so detailed, I use Adobe Acrobat to keep my notes on the document itself. That's the way I just happen to do it. And for whatever reason, the pre-app document tonight had a lot of notes that were just, they were generated by, by AutoCAD, so there were like 249 notes on the pre-app doc. I'm sure that wasn't meant to be published that way. Anyway, it's no big deal because I know how to filter that out, but it just, I've never seen that before on a document produced. So something to think about. There's a setting in AutoCAD to prevent that.
Just as an aside, and this will, there's, you know, the Robert's Rules of Order procedural, and this will come later. Commissioner Ewart had brought some items up that we'll be discussing with Chair Ellison. And that's not really on the timing, but just to let you know, there's some structural elements that Commissioner Ewart brought up, which I support on being more like the council and, you know, is there a question on the motion and those kinds of things? Just a little bit tighter of a process, and I think we can always have room for improvement.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Judy, if I said 10 minutes, I was in error.
Okay. I thought maybe your script was wrong.
The applicant has 20 minutes.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
The staff should have a longer period of time too. I get what you say and I appreciate it. I'm with you on that. But I think that if Brianna, your people put together a presentation, I think keeping it within 15 minutes would be a much better thing rather than just, because there's points that they want to make that, that they want to make clear. I just think it would be better.
Gotcha.
Better than, they don't have to necessarily take all 15 minutes, but.
Yeah, and I, and I would agree. I mean, I, I think we're trying to find a balance where, you know, really the applicant has the burden, but we also want to be thorough in our review.
Yeah, I agree. It takes how long it takes. Just our, we need to adjust maybe.
Right. Okay. I know Walnut Street Extension?
Walnut Street Extension, that, I know that the indenture process for ODOT is still going through. We're, you know, we're still, you know, collecting fees for that road, at least fee and lieu for industrial. I am going to be meeting with our finance folks on like where that is at. We're not driving. This is public work, so I'm speaking as kind of a secondhand. But just kind of where it's at, when it's going to start, when it's going to go out to bid, you know? I, I need to give you more information based on facts. But, but basically, the fact that I can tell you is the indenture process should be getting close to being finished, which means ODOT would allow that access point. And then it would be up to the city to do the bid, get it out for bid, and then go into construction.
I'm going to keep asking that question.
Yeah.
All the time. Till I can stop at that stoplight myself. All right, very good. Anybody else have anything?
Just something that might be of interest to the folks here. So I talked to Public Works earlier today, and the, the light at Township and Ivy is out to bid. They expect to start it this April and to have everything completed in that area by April of '25. It is not going to be activated because the traffic studies don't show that it needs to be activated quite yet. It might be necessary sooner rather than later as that area develops. But just FYI, we'll see construction there for a good year, starting in April. The intersect, or rather, the traffic signaling will be going in, but not functional.
Whoa, cool. What about the traffic cameras?
We're still working on that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, council is very vehemently opposed.
All right. Anybody else got anything else? Then we will consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you, Canby.